Welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting for the Town of Acton, Maine for March 19th, 2019. First item is salute the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
And I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Approval of the minutes of the last meetings?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the last two meetings.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the last two meetings. Any further discussion? No call for vote? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Department heads and committee chair updates. Why don't we start? Okay, we'll get into animal control.
My name is Peter Horn. I'm the new animal control officer. I've been on the job since December. I've only had 24 calls.
Only?
Most were lost or loose barking dogs. At this time, I've been following up on unregistered dogs. I made most of my calls to all the people. Now, I gotta go out and give written warnings. So, I've been working on that at the moment, and I've only had to take two dogs to the Both were claimed within a day or two.
That's good.
And that's about it right at the moment.
What do you think as you're settling in? What do you think of the jobs?
Yeah, it's coming around. It's okay.
Yeah.
It's hard to track people down at home, you know. I think a couple people, I think they just didn't answer their door, you know.
Yeah. That happens.
But, yep, that's about it at this time.
Good.
Okay. So, he's gonna be, he's gonna be preparing a warrant for you guys. So, dog licenses were due in December. They give you January as freebie month. February, they give late fees. March, they're starting to turn into late slash warrant fees. As of April 1st, right now, it's a $25 fine. April 1st is gonna go up to 15, and he's just gonna start issuing court summonses. I mean, at this point, we still have almost three pages of unlicensed dogs.
Three? I was gonna ask how many. Normally, it's not, you know.
Yeah, we've just have, we've had a lot, and we've tried to make phone conversations, you know, reach out to everybody. A lot of numbers are no good, so if you, you know, didn't register your dog last year and it's no longer with you, you've got to notify us. We would have no way of knowing that, you know.
Yeah, if your dog passed away.
If your dog passed or gave it away, so. Don't ignore Peter's calls. He's gonna start going door to door now.
Yeah, I've been on that, yeah.
Been already started that?
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
Okay. Perfect.
Let us know if you need anything.
Yep, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Actually, before you take off, did you, where does the phone go as of Thursday?
Oh, no, 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 no. Yeah, about that. I'll take it.
Yeah, I had one call this month until far.
They're waiting for you to go away to.
Yeah.
I want Jen to answer.
How long are you gonna be on again?
Couple weeks.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Okay.
He was afraid to ask.
He was afraid to ask.
I don't blame him. I would be too.
Nice.
Okay, school committee.
Well, the school committee might be a little longer report than his was, but I'd like to start out by saying that we've just completed our budget process. We, we're very appreciative of the Warrant Finance Committee for their careful consideration of it and for supporting the recommendations of the school committee on all of the different budget, budget items. The process begins way back in November when the teachers start bringing requests for materials and things to Mr. Ross, and then by January, we, the school committee has their first meeting on the budget, and then at the end of January, we started our meetings where we had invited the Warrant Finance Committee to come to all of our workshops. The final review was last night, and I think the selectmen have it ready to sign tonight if they're gonna sign and approve it for us. I'm very pleased that we can tell you that the school budget only increased by less than 1 percent. It was almost flat, so the school budget will have really no impact. If there's any tax increase, it won't come from the school budget because we really flatlined our budget, and we're happy, very happy with, with the plans that we have made. As a part of that, as a part of the budget, the Southern Maine, the Maine Legislature passed last year legislation creating up to 12 regional service centers to encourage schools to kind of pool resources and save money, something that we've been doing with Sanford for quite a few years now, pooling our resources on food services and paper, buying paper and oil and so forth. The York County Regional Service Center, the Southern Maine Regional Collaborative, gave us a bid on our transportation for next year, and they came in as the low bidder, and they're going to be providing us with five brand-new buses that will say Acton School Department on them, and also they're going to have a spare bus at the school just in case one breaks down and we need, they need to take one for servicing or something like that. And this bid compared to other bids, this is gonna save us over $63,000 over a three period, three-year period, so it was really a pretty good deal for us, and we had a chance to ask him a lot of questions about different things that we were concerned about, and we're very happy with the responses that we got, so we're very pleased about our new bus contract. The only other thing I'd like to mention about the budget is that we are having a school town meeting on April 2nd to vote on the warrant articles, and would really encourage everybody to be a part of this process and come out and support the children of Acton. I wanna tell you just a little bit about another program that we have going at the, at the Acton School that maybe you don't know about or haven't heard about if you don't have kids at school. If you have kids at school, I'm sure you've heard about it, but it's called the Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports Program that started, this is our third year, was that correct? It started two years ago. We've done it for two years. This is our third year, and it's a school-wide behavior program that sets expectations, the same expectations from K pre-K right up through grade eight for what is expected in common areas like the cafeteria, the hallways, the playground, bathrooms, and on the buses. And also, it has a voice level. The idea about this is to give positive feedback rather than negative. For instance, a student might be using the appropriate voice level in a hallway, and a teacher will give them what we call cat cash, because you know we are the Wildcats after all. So, they can get cat cash if they're caught doing something that's very positive that they need to be commended on, and they might say, for instance, "I like the way you're using a zero-level voice in the hallway." Or on the, on the flip side of that, if they're running in the hallway, instead of yelling, "No running," you just say, "Walking feet, please," and they all get the same instructions and they all get the same expectations from pre-K through eight, so the language is the same, and most of the students really respond very well. We've seen a big change in our student behaviors at the school since this was instituted, and this year, we've, we're piloting the second phase of it, which is for those 20 percent of kids that maybe need a little extra encouragement to follow all the expectations and to fall in line with them, so that's called the second tier. But that's, that's been put in place, and we're finding that also to be very effective. We also have, the cat cash, by the way, goes in a jar, a big jar in the main office, and when the jar gets all filled up with cat cash, some names get drawn out of it, and special rewards are given at the, at the Friday afternoon assemblies where Whiskers, our Wildcat mascot, makes several appearances. I also wanted to mention that our high school students are experiencing their first year in the brand-new Sanford High School this year, Sanford High School and Regional Technical Center, as well as the new Performing Arts Center. I posted on Facebook, maybe everybody isn't on Facebook, and if you are, I posted though in WhatsApp in Acton, a really cool video of, that was made from the, by some of the students in the vocational that totally explains all the different pathways that the students can follow down there, whether it's in science and engineering, or arts, or the medical field, or whatever. It's an excellent one that demonstrates what the students are doing, so I would encourage you, if you get a chance, to look at that. Maybe we can get it put on the, maybe we can get put it on the school website, too. I haven't really thought about that. But we continue to get very good reports from Sanford High School that our students go there very well-prepared for the ninth grade and that they excel not only academically but also athletically and in some of the social services that they have. You'll, you'll also find many of our Acton students on the Sanford High School honor roll when that comes out each time. And in closing, I'd just like to say that as the school committee, we feel that our school is really flourishing under Mr. Ross's leadership. We're very proud of the staff that we have that have embraced proficiency-based learning and administration that provides excellent leadership for that. Acton Elementary School is a very warm and welcoming place, where teamwork and skills are all working together to provide for the many, many different levels of needs that our kids have academically, emotionally, and all those things that go with it. Positive, it's very positive and upbeat climate. You can feel it as soon as you step into the school, and I would just encourage anybody who's interested in seeing what really goes on in the school. You get a chance to see the budget, you get a chance to come to town meeting and hear us ask for money to support all the programs and things that we have in place, but I would encourage you, if you'd really like to see what it's like, to see some students and teachers in action, to give Mr. Ross a call and make an appointment with him, and I'm sure he would be happy to take you through the school and show you some of the things. I think you would be really surprised to find some of the different types of learning experiences that our kids in the Acton School are experiencing. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions or?
I don't. You have any questions?
No. I think, so this is your third year with the behavioral program, and it's going well.
Going very well.
You must be seeing results by now. That's nice.
Sounds like a really good program.
Yeah.
A lot of schools have begun to, to institute this positive behavior program, and so we're happy that we have it going at our school, and we've noticed a big change in disciplinary issues since the program has been instituted, so.
It's nice that it's consistent all the way up.
Yeah.
It's like the consistency.
Takes a lot of training for the staff, too, to do that, and we've had expert, expert trainers coming in to work with the staff on it so that everybody's on the same page in it. It's been very effective, and we're, we're very happy with it.
Great.
Thank you. So, that's, that's our update.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, old business. Action plan from May Municipal.
So, our underwriter Lance was actually out here today. He came to follow up with a couple of concerns he had. One of the big conversations was the fitness center, which we'll talk about a little later on. He made an additional change to the fire department and reviewed everything that they had done there. We're in pretty good shape. We're still waiting for the transfer station to finish a couple things, and then we should be ready to turn it over to them.
Okay, great. 1920, proposed the budget.
So, on Saturday, we had our meeting with Warrant and Finance, the selectmen, all the department heads. I guess we're just looking for a little direction so that the treasurer and myself kinda know what direction we're going in as we start working on the warrant. As she explained to you, everything put forth the way that it was on Saturday. We were looking at a minimum of 13 cents tax increase, and that was based on moving $400,000 forward. In the past, we've only moved 300,000 forward, but we've also adjusted the road accounts in a different way that, that we won't need that extra $100,000 for overages for winter. But I know there were some concerns Saturday about, you know, the tax rate. Are you, do you wanna sit down and look at it? Are you looking for recommended cutting areas, or you wanna move forward with it the way it is?
I feel like we should sit down again.
Wouldn't hurt. Yeah, I mean, I don't know if we can cut enough to, you know, whether we can cut 100, but we can cut some, I think so. I mean, we've got some fixed items like insurance and things of that nature. You gotta offer some decent benefits to have good people, so I don't see that as being a real spot that we can do anything in, nor do I want to, so.
So, I can tell you that the Warrant and Finance is gonna be meeting on Monday to have their first meeting. They are, they're not gonna have the warrant for Monday, but as I understood it from the meeting last night, some of the members have some generic questions, but we need to think about turning this warrant over to them, you know, by the end of the month, so if we're looking at making cuts, that affects the warrant, so how soon can we?
I can't do it. I can maybe do something Thursday night.
Kim, when are you actually leaving Thursday? Do you have?
I can come in tomorrow. I mean, 'cause I started going through it and kinda.
How much is the budget up from last year, Michelle? 137.
137, right. And there's a couple spots.
So, even if you wanna just share that?
Right.
And then you guys have ideas of where your cuts may be, if any?
Yeah, I wanna see whether we're, I know, like I said, I know insurance is part of the number that it's up by, so see where else it's up by and see where we can go.
Okay.
Yep. What time do you want me?
So, Thursday at 7:00?
That would work.
Well, it's not really, I mean, you're not really posting it in time. I mean, you can, you know, it's not gonna be a meeting, but if you wanna just, you know, share your individual concerns.
No decisions are made.
Yeah, yeah, it's no decisions or anything like that.
So, hopefully by the following week, we can release it to them.
Just a discussion. Yeah. It's okay, we can just have, we'll have the.
I think there are only three or four areas that you guys had talked about possibly being able to cut, and we, I can go over those with Michelle tomorrow afternoon as well and get her recommendations, if any.
Mm-hmm. Sounds good. Okay, anything else on that? Nope. EMA Director, 911 Operator Job Descriptions.
Tabling for this week.
Okay. District one equipment? That's still an ongoing?
I mean, unless somebody tells me that the stuff has been returned, am I leaving it on the agenda?
We're just waiting for the snow to go to get the rest of it off. We've got the radios.
And waiting for the hay. He hasn't moved that.
Right, move the hay out and get the sander back, so I can put another phone call into him.
Okay.
For that, it's been two or three weeks. Okay. Fitness Center.
So, I've, as I've mentioned a couple of times, the insurance company is just struggling with the fitness center and what's going over, on over there in regards to no real oversight, no control of the keys, no one giving an orientation, 24/7, no surveillance. The board's gonna have to give a good look at whether or not you wanna increase the fees where, so that we can pick up some of their requirements, or, you know, think about giving the equipment back to the fire department where it would just be fire rescue using it on their premises under the fire department. It would certainly cut down the amount of liability because it's not open townwide, but.
We had, what, about 25 people using that?
Well, we have about.
On that list, but.
We have about 20 people using it, but, I mean, we have about 20 people signed up, but probably over 50 using it.
I'm cracking the whip.
Yeah, at least has, at least has been over. She's made a couple of spot checks, and a couple of them have come in, and some of them hadn't paid since like 2017. But unless we, you know, and the other only option, if you wanna put some money into it, is we can change the lock every year, but, you know, but we need some secretarial support. Somebody's gotta, today, he showed us how to inspect each piece of equipment, and, you know, he's got some changes that he wants to make, but there's some work involved to it, so.
Work involved, and nobody's doing it.
And he, he's saying that the equipment has to check, be checked daily or monthly?
Well, he, he wants it inspected by someone licensed at least once a year. He wants it, somebody that, on behalf of the town, that's been properly trained a minimum of once a week, you know, looking at the welds on some of the equipment, making sure the equipment that's stationary is actually stationary to the ground, which none of it is. He had barbells that were turned the wrong way because if you walked into them, you know, it's trip hazards. I mean, they're by the back door, there's a piece of equipment too close to the door, it's just a lot of little things, but if you're not checking it weekly, if there, you know, people are kinda moving it and shifting it around. So, again, and, and he's got a lot of paperwork that he'd like to see put in there.
Okay. I don't know, maybe it's time to call it quits on it. Let's think about it for a week and maybe talk to the fire department and see what their thoughts are. My only thought is, is how mu, how many of these rules and regulations still continue if we put it over there?
All of them will.
Right.
But the difference, as he believed, it was to be a less, more controlled group. I mean, you have how many fire department or per diems together. You have one department head that is in his building, it's gonna be his responsibility. He's got a couple of assistant chiefs that he can delegate the inspection to. I mean, he's got more staff and manpower.
Oh, yeah.
Than, you know, the town administrator's part-time assistant.
Okay. Well, let's think about it and see what direction we go. And we also have the, we don't have the rec department that's not on the list tonight, are they?
No.
No, was I supposed to have them on there?
No, 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 I'm just thinking out loud, kinda sorta. We still have their thoughts on what they wanted to do.
And what did they wanna do with the public safety building?
The other building that's over there, the ambulance building, the old ambulance building, they just wanted to turn it into their, their rec center.
To do what inside it specifically?
What did they have? They wanted to move the gym equipment over there. That was one thing they had talked about.
Yeah.
So, they wanted to oversee the gym equipment?
That's kinda what I thought.
Right. Not sure if they knew what, what that entails, so.
Remember, I mean, moving it from one department to another doesn't.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, but, yeah, the things still go on, but once again, there's new people and different people to.
Right, I'm just saying the town's still liable, whether it's the fire department, the rec. It's just a matter of who you open it up to.
Right.
And there are ways that we can keep it open. There's just, we just have to find the resources to, you know, if that means raising the prices and, you know, bringing in staff to assist or putting some more duties on the selectmen.
They may have the, the resources, too.
Yeah, they may.
I mean, they've got, they've got more people over, you know, in that, in the, you know, the rec, so just a thought, and they, you know, they had thoughts about making a new driveway over there, so it didn't impede the fire station side of things. I don't know, I had to look at the list again to see what.
And the fire chief would like to speak to you about that because he doesn't believe that you could split up that parking lot and he'd still have room to.
It's got nothing to do with his parking lot.
It wouldn't even be on the park.
Everything was gonna be the other side.
Yeah, they wouldn't even go near.
Yeah, yeah. Basically, basically, the door side of that building would be the back of the building.
Okay.
So, yep, okay. Why don't we put that on for next week? You're not here next week. Can we discuss it without you? Do you mind?
No, I don't mind.
Okay.
You can go right ahead.
You mean speaking with the rec?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Bring the rec in, put, yeah, put the rec on for next week.
See what they say, I mean.
Will they have their plans they gave us there a few weeks ago and just?
I mean, they did put some thought into.
Yeah, they put a lot into those plans that they'd come up with and just kinda think that forward a little bit more.
Yeah, and, and not to, not to put any pressure on you, but you need, it's gotta be done sooner than later because there was money involved in those plans.
Right, 'cause of, yep.
And if you're gonna put something on the warrant, we can't change it once we keep giving it to Warrant and Finance.
Oh, yeah, no, I know. I'd like to give it to, when we give it to Warrant Finance, and that's, that's it, so. Okay. Row Bridge damage.
So, the treasurer sent you an email indicating that the insurance company will not pay for the damages caused by the vehicles on Row Bridge. They've sent something in the mail to give us a little more further information on why that is. They are willing to go after the two drivers as far as personal liability, but can't do anything until we've got some bills in hand. Last I spoke to the road commissioner, he was still waiting for the ground to thaw, snow to melt, before he can really get in there. I don't drive by that way, so I'm not sure if there's barriers up yet, but I know you guys gave him permission to do that about three weeks ago.
Right. I don't know if he has yet or not.
I don't drive by either. I, I mean, I.
Thank you.
Okay.
I haven't been down.
Okay, yeah, we'll get on him.
But you wanted to know what account the money would come out of? Are we allowed to use the account where the HEB preliminary report came from, the extra $10,000?
Based on the wording of the article, I would say legally, yes. I don't think it was the intention of the article, though.
But if we get reimbursed, it would just go back in?
Right, but you gotta keep in mind, it may take years to get reimbursed. I mean, remember, these are two New Hampshire drivers, neither of which had insurance, so to, I agree with Michelle, I mean, based on the wording, I think you could, but it wasn't the intent of the article, and you may not ever get collection from these two people, depending on what they have. That's a risk to take.
Yeah, I think I'd rather use budget.
One of the districts doesn't, they don't have any money, right?
District two does.
District two has money.
We, I mean, we have to start with repairs. It may even be months before we can get the work done, but we can't do anything without the repairs. I'm gonna, I'll put another call out to him because the, remember, the sheriff's department told us three weeks ago, they want, those barriers needed to go up, so.
Right. Okay.
Did he order them? Didn't he have to order them? He got the quotes.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Do you want me to call him?
I'll send them a text.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on Row Bridge? Move on to Seventh Street?
Seventh Street, I just, so I sent it over to Burke and Clegg to review to see if Seventh Street had met all the requirements in the road ordinance. He replied just about 20 minutes ago, basically saying that there's a bit of a concern with the ordinance saying that Class B roads require 34 feet, and it has to be part of the fee in, simple interest, not just easement, so he's left a message with Lankowski, who essentially worked for the property owners to write that, to get clarification, and he had a couple of words that he wanted to add to the warrant article, but I should have more information on that next week.
Okay. Okay. Auditor selection.
So, Michelle is here, as is the finance director from the school.
Okay.
She has a memo. Do you wanna read this to them, or do you want me to? Okay. So, Acton Board of Selectmen, in regards to the bid for the annual municipal audit, you have requested that I vet each of the two applicants and give an opinion as to who the bid should be awarded to. After working with RHR Smith and Associates for the past nine years, I've experienced audit with three different lead auditors and several assistants. All were friendly, helpful, professional, and willing to go beyond just the basic audit service to offer advice on many different financial matters with the town. I can always call them throughout the year for an opinion or guidance, and the town has never been charged for any additional fees. Having an auditing firm that is approachable for year-round needs is very important to the finance department. The other applicant, RKO, has high standings in the municipal audit world as well. I have spoken to several clients and have heard no adverse opinions on their working relationships with the municipalities. It is my understanding that a few people from the public have asked the town to change auditing firms. While the opinions vary as to whether this is necessary and cost-effective or not, I would not object to changing firms, but would prefer to stay with RHR Smith, who has always provided us with great service. I will point out that a typical recommendation on changing auditors applies to the person who is performing the audit and not necessarily the firm itself. Lead auditor is most often referred to as the recommendation for changing every five years or so, so like I mentioned previously, we have had different lead office auditors in the past nine years, although through the same firm. After conferring with the finance director at the school, she has offered no objection to changing firms, but would prefer to stay with RHR Smith. The audit recap that you see below is what you opened last week, the $14,000 for the total for RKO, 14-4 for the third year. RHR Smith was 13-4, not to exceed the three years of $40,200. Sincerely, Michelle Remney, Treasurer, certified treasurer, we need to put that. So, that is her recommendation. She met with Kim, and she's here if you wanna ask her any additional questions. Her and I have not spoke about it at all.
Okay. Do you folks wanna talk to Michelle or, or even the school?
I just had the question about the additional fees. RKO, I think in one of the bids, I mentioned that there's, they charge a fee per hour if you go over the auditing or maybe call and ask questions.
There are things that are beyond what they expected in the audit. They would charge additional fees at their, to a $10 a hour rate, so we couldn't say for sure that the audit was only gonna cost that $14,000.
Okay, and you've had three different people doing the audits that's come here?
Yes.
Okay.
So, they do change them out then?
Over the last nine years, so you're changing almost every three.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
And RHR Smith chooses the auditor to come out.
Well, they, they, they present to us who they're going to send out.
Okay.
And I'm sure. Uh, and I'm sure we have issues with that. Recommend somebody else, but.
But you're not picking the auditor.
No.
Just to be clear.
Okay. Okay. Anything else?
No.
We hear a recommendation to, uh, accept an auditing firm.
I make a motion to accept the bid from RHR Smith based on the recommendation from the Certified Treasurer of Acton and the Finance Director at the school.
Okay, do we hear a second?
Yes, I will second that.
Moved and seconded to accept the bid from RHR Smith for our auditing for the next, uh, both for the next year or three years, whichever we want to.
All right, we're not locked in.
You're correct.
Oh, we're not locked in?
I don't think we're locked in for three, are we?
Three-year cost.
With RKO, you have an option for the one, one or two years.
Okay, that was one.
Variance of price by a couple hundred dollars.
Right.
RHR Smith is saying either way, you go.
Okay, okay.
Are we allowed to do up to three years?
I'd say it's probably best to just do one year.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, the recommendation is you go with our HR Smith for one year for our auditing firm, and it's been seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
Nope?
Nope.
Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed. Okay, good.
Okay. Something in there they need to sign? Or you'll get a letter.
Okay, new business, 1920 school warrant.
So as the school committee, um, Ms. Judy, um, said they had their, we had the last Warren Finance meeting last night, uh, all the recommendations from the warrant and finance have been put in there. I had Kim and Judy and sent it over to the superintendent, uh, to proof. Everybody's, um, came across with the same, and Michelle, thank you for proving it from Shapley, because she's the only one that caught that we didn't have a moderator as Article One. Kim and I and Judy were all focused on the numbers and we'd forgotten the moderator, so thank you.
I thought the top looked funny yesterday. I was like, something's missing up here.
We had, I think, one or two little minor changes, but we're all on the same page, so. Everybody's notes matched and should be ready to be posted.
Articles two through 13 are the regular instruction?
Two, three, 13.
There is. 13, right to that.
There's 20 total.
19? 19.
19.
A missing one? Unless the numbers didn't get shifted.
What? Oh, no, no, that's right.
What's that?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Okay. So this is the school budget, 2019-20, special town meeting warrant. Let's see, I'm just looking to see if that was, there's got to be a total on here somewhere.
Article 14, 15 has the total?
14 and 15.
Somewhere around there.
Okay.
Somewhere else is it?
Looks like it's this one here to see if the town, see if the, to see what some of the town of Acton will authorize the school committee to expend for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, ending June 30th, 2020. School department contributions to the total, cost of funding for public schools. Let's see, it looks like 5,607,553. Does that sound correct? Okay, and the Warren Finance recommends.
Prove as recommended.
Yes, there it is. Okay, so what does he wishes of the board?
Uh, make a ma- motion to sign the, um, Town of Acton Main School Budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
For the school.
What's that?
For the, just for the school budget.
Yes, the school budget.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded to sign the budget, the, uh, special town warrant for the school budget, 2019, 2020. Any further discussion?
Well, no, I just want to say that I think that the school committee is doing a, a great job. Um, thank you for all your hard work. There's a lot of, um, dedicated members on that committee that keep coming back and I, I want to thank you for doing that. And I also, I think the teachers are wonderful and I'm, I'm glad John's here with you guys. I think he's doing a great job too.
And the fact you're up less than 1%?
Yeah.
Almost unheard of, yeah, so.
Kids are lucky to have you guys here.
Yep. Okay, call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed.
Great.
Thank you. Excuse me, I get this stupid tickle in my throat that won't go away. Okay, road account balances.
This next item is from the treasurer, just more of an FYI so that you're aware. You see the total road budget that was approved, the 687,238, you're allowed by law to go over 15% overdraft before you would have to have a special town meeting. So at this point, uh, the balance is 43,702,46. So if, uh, winter is done, we should be fine. But if we get any more storms, it may be another, another conversation, but.
Yep.
I trust the guys. Could they get a copy of this? Yep. So, just information.
Thank you.
Hopefully that was the last salt bill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it is overdrafted right now, but it's not over the 15%?
Right.
The 15.
Okay. Okay, great. It's far better than it's been the last couple of years, so.
I thought it was going to be worse.
Yeah.
It seemed like we've had.
There is something coming for Thursday and Friday, but.
Rain.
There, yeah, that's what it's looking like, so. Okay.
Sometimes it's that rain this time of year leads to all that flooding and washout, so.
Yeah. Draft bonding policy.
So one of the, um, other things that, that came up with, uh, Main Municipal and bonding was in regards to some of the various departments that, um, collect money. Um, as it is now, the treasurer, myself, and my deputy are all bonded through Main Municipal. But we're looking to put a policy together to extend that to other departments that might have, um, might be handling money. So all employees and volunteers who handle cash payments for goods, services, permitting, and donations must apply to the treasurer annually to be bonded by the town's insurance policy. This includes, but is not limited to, the Acton Rec Department, Land Use Department, and Fire Rescue Department. It is preferred that all cash payments be directed to the tax collector's office to make said payment and a receipt will be provided to the customer. Any cash accepted by the department shall be remitted to the treasurer within five business days of receipt and should be payable to the town of Acton. Um, this is just a draft for you to look at the first time. Um, I guess when I looked at it, my first thought was it is a preference that all cash payments, I mean, can we not force that? Not to take cash payments because the, well, the rec. Concessions, right. And then five days, you think that's, I was thinking like three, but I think five business days? For them to turn checks over?
Yes, definitely.
That's plenty, I think plenty of time, but. Is there anything else?
So how are we handling concessions then?
Cash and check?
Yeah, so they're still, they're still going to be bonded.
Oh, okay.
And they're only going to have, they only have a small amount of cash on them. Um, I believe she starts them with petty cash of $200 and they balance their receipts and come, come into her regularly.
Okay.
But like anything downstairs, land use, we try to send them all upstairs to get receipts while they're here.
Yeah, that, that one's easy because they're right in the same building, so.
Is, we're charged per person for bonding, right? Yeah.
Instead of it is preference, shouldn't it just be that all cash payments are directed to you?
Well, she's saying, if we put that, there'll be.
Oh, then, okay.
With the rec, right, yep.
All right.
How expensive is it to bond someone?
Well, it depends on the liability, how much money we can actually be paying.
Okay. So this shouldn't make.
It's expensive for Sarah, uh, Jennifer, myself, because, I mean, protection is about $7 million a year, so.
So with concessions, are you doing it like the rec, like the rec director, even though he's not going to be in the snack shack though?
It would have to be other person that runs concessions.
Oh.
Other person that touches the cash.
So they should choose one person per sport maybe to save the town money?
That would be nice.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Do you see it would be any huge impact on the budget to do this?
With the, the amount of exposure with concessions, no.
Okay.
$200, you know, for the exposure there is not going to, I don't believe it's a great value.
Right, the five days is okay? Anyone shorter than that?
I think five days is fine, uh, knowing that most of these people are, they're working Monday through Friday, so in hopes that, you know, a Thursday night they can come in and drop off money, you know, or work with them later.
And for instance, if you, if they adds a function on Friday night, it's going to be Monday before they can even get it in here, so.
But it says business, that's why, the only reason I was thinking shorter, but, um, and remember, they can, I mean, it can be remitted to the treasurer, but they can be left with a deputy treasurer as well, so. We can take it anytime the town hall is open.
Yep, okay. You folks want to act on this tonight or you want to?
Yeah.
I really don't see any reason why we can't.
No, just the, the minor edit for preferred and taking, the second line is, um, the word is instead of it.
All right, we'll make a change and put it on the agenda for next week.
Okay, sounds good. Okay. ZBA rehearing. Okay, this comes from the zoning board of appeals, heard a, heard a hearing, uh, probably over a month ago now. On, uh, 13th Street?
Yes.
Toto's 13th Street? Okay. They made a decision. And the plaintiffs didn't, you know, took it beyond, they went, took it to Superior Court. Our attorneys have gotten involved with it and think that it probably should come back to the, the attorney believes it should come back to the zoning board of appeals to be reheard with some guidance from the, uh, from the judge. So, um, we had an informal meeting with our attorney, that wasn't much informal, I'm sure he charged us, but a meeting with our attorney, along with our code enforcement officer and land use secretary. Going over a bunch of different things on this. And the thought is, is to have the zoning board of appeals, appeals rehear this, but have the attorney meet with the judge and the, and the parties to come up with some guidelines as to how to proceed with this. There's two ways of, two ways of proceeding with it. One is leave it in Superior Court, let it go through the process. Spend thousands of dollars on our attorney, only to have it be kicked back to the zoning board of appeals. Or cut to the chase, get with the attorneys, get with the judge, and say, okay, there's a possibility that we aired and let's just kick it back to the zoning board of appeals on our own and avoid step A. And a lot of, yeah, a lot of expense. Which I feel is the way we should go, so.
And that's the lawyer's advice as well.
Yeah, this was his recommendations.
Yeah, which is, uh, Joel Lenkowski, our land use lawyer, so, um, I don't think he'd steer us wrong if, I mean, I, I, I said this earlier, just in our office hours that we had, I mean, I try to lean towards our, um, employees and stay on their side as best I can, but when our attorney comes up and says, you know, because we do have a little, there's a little, um, change in how, not a change, but there's, both sides don't feel the same. Our, our code enforcement officer and land use folks want to go one way, the attorney wants to go the other. As smart as our land use people are that we have in the building here, um, I'm sorry to say, I'm going to take the advice of the attorney, of our attorney, and I think to avoid the legalities and whatnot and the expense, which it may end up right back in court anyway, but at least the folks on 13th Street will have the hear, the, their.
Proper hearing.
Yeah, their proper hearing or their concerns will be heard, will be aired out and he, and heard, um, in their entirety, and we move forward from there, so. I guess we just need to give our, give, um, our town administrator some direction. And we probably should take a vote on it to kick it back to, to have it reheard with ZBA.
I'll make a motion to take the lawyer's recommendation to kick it back to the zoning board of appeals to be reheard. So we, do we get that?
So essentially.
I was going to say get guidelines from, from the judge too.
So we'll reach out to the, the, what I heard you saying, so I'll reach out to Lenkowski tomorrow and he will negotiate with the defendants and the judge and try to work out something to see if they can agree to have it reheard.
Yeah.
And I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded to have it reheard or to, uh, have our land use attorney, um, work with the courts to have this reheard. Correct?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed? Okay.
Eric, I think that's your phone.
It's got it locked up in the room, but it's cool. Okay, let's see. Next item, public hearing, road committee commissioners ballot.
Okay, so, um, what I think the selectmen's, um, instruction to me is, is that you would like to vote on the duties of the road committee and the road commissioner's job description by secret ballot on June 18th, along with the other elected seats.
Right.
Correct?
Yep.
Okay. So if you want to do that, so we'll need to prepare an order for the secret ballots, um, which will probably, you'll probably sign on the 9th. But I need you to pick a public hearing date, so because it's by secret ballot, you have to have a public hearing on it.
Is it June 11th, though? State votes?
No, it's the 18th, remember, because we moved town meeting to the 22nd.
Oh, so we don't, I thought we followed what the state did on that Tuesday.
There's no state election this year.
Oh, there isn't, okay.
So it'll be the 18th.
So the elections are June 18th, that Tuesday, from, polls will be open from 8 to 8, and town meeting is going to be on Saturday, the 22nd. Did you want to tell them what time you decided to start?
8:00 AM.
So.
Yep.
The.
So you've got to back up so many days because we got to do it before, um, absentees are.
So sometime the end of April, the 1st of May. Um, and I would recommend doing it sooner, so in case anybody convinces you to make a lot of major changes, if you had to have another one.
Right.
So maybe, um, like the 23rd, do you feel like we could have everything?
The 23rd of?
Or actually, what, well, what day of the week? I mean, you're going to need to have a public hearing at 7 for this. So could we do it like on the 22nd?
Sure, what day is that?
Monday.
Monday?
April 22nd? 7.
Which means that within the next couple of weeks, we need to get, um, these two documents finalized. I have pretty much most of your recommendations from our meeting last week, so hopefully.
Warren Finance, you don't, you typically meet on Mondays?
Not necessarily.
Okay, so you don't have anything scheduled for the 22nd right now?
No.
No.
Okay.
I have nothing scheduled until March 8th as of the end.
Okay, great. You didn't want to get a conflict going there before we even started?
I checked, I checked.
I'm sure you did, but.
Okay, so we'll tend to at least schedule for that and, um, we'll prepare an order for you to sign to get those two on a secret ballot.
Good. Yep, and this will be a, uh, mine's gone blank. What do we call it? Say.
You said you wanted a road committee ordinance and a job description for the road commissioner.
What are we talking about, the vote? The secret ballot?
The item, yeah, yeah, ordinance.
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 There we go.
Yes, one's an ordinance?
Yep.
Okay, both ordinance, is that what?
Yeah, one's, yeah.
One's, one is and one isn't?
I don't know about the job description, is that going to be part of an ordinance? I'll have to, I'll have to get back to on that.
Okay.
I thought we were just doing a.
Sounds good, okay. Okay.
You just can't wait, can you?
Look at him, he's in line.
Do I hear a motion to adj, oh, no, we can't adjourn quite yet. Go ahead, Dennis. Public comment.
You're better off than, uh, the warrant finance committee and the school committee was last night because, uh, while I was talking last night, the TV room started, uh, putting my voice out too.
Oh, gosh.
So there was getting from me from both ends of the room, and I was going on one of my rants down there and one of my rants out here. So the people had the pleasure of listening to Dennis Long at two different meetings at the same time.
Oh, dear.
So you're, you're better off than, uh, most people were last night. I, I knew you guys, uh, had talked about, uh, doing a, uh, job description for the road commissioners, and I hadn't really heard anything. and I hadn't really heard anything about it, and I want to be, I did some work, me and somebody else, and I want to be very clear. The road committee has not seen this document at all, and neither has the warrant finance committee.
Right.
This is a citizens' thing, just a couple of us got together, and we did this out, and it is a job description for a road commissioner, and it's in the form of an ordinance, and if, I'll just give it to you, and you can look at it.
Okay.
There might be some things that.
Take from it?
Might be helpful.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You might want to just show it in the trash, but rather you didn't.
No, most likely not.
Can you send it to me electronically in case they want to cut bits and pieces out of it?
Uh.
Can you have somebody send it to me electronically so that in case they want to cut bits and pieces out of it?
I don't know who I could do that, because I did everything by hand.
Never mind, I'll retype it.
What, you typed this up?
No, I had somebody type it out.
Forget it, it's fine.
Okay. So it's not available electronically? I'm hearing a lot of no's.
It's me.
From somebody back here in the audience, but, you know.
No, no, it's me.
I'd prefer they be quiet, but.
It's me, Ed. You know, I don't, this stuff was scratched and written out.
Okay, sure.
And I, I think, under the circumstances that we've been in, as we've all talked about, that it should be an ordinance.
Sure.
And who's responsible to who and things like that.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis, appreciate it. Okay. Any other public comment?
I know earlier this evening, we talked about the ambulance building, public safety building.
Yes.
The unused one.
Yep.
And just sort of as a little reminder, rec had talked about using that as a community center.
Right.
So it'd be more than just a rec center. They had in fact called the Owls and said, could you see a use for it over here? And we could, I mean, you know, a few years back, they used to just have coffee and donuts, sometimes for seniors to drop in, you know, where you didn't have a whole big thing, so I'd just like to put that plug in, that I think there could be a lot of good, not just, you know.
Not just fitness.
Not just fitness.
Community.
But a real community center.
Yep, great, thank you. Yeah, I agree. I think.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I think there's a lot of good uses for that building. I mean, the other building over here, we've had numerous issues with, from water leaking into it, you know, I don't know, just a number of different things, so it might be time to move on, so. Any other public comment?
Well, I wasn't going to, Ed. Somebody piqued my interest.
Come right up.
Certainly. Rawlins Waterhouse, taxpayer. I support the suggestion of making the old ambulance building across the street where the fire department is into a community rec center, and give the fire department back their exercise equipment, and raise this building, and create a larger parking area. That's my suggestion.
You don't mean raise the building, you mean.
I'm talking about raise it.
Lower it, lower it right to the ground.
Correct.
Yes, yeah, okay.
That's all I got.
Yeah, spelling difference.
Okay. Great. Any other public?
Insurance.
Any other public comment? Nope, okay. Announcements, meetings are on the website as usual, baseball sign-up is due on the twenty-eighth and the twenty-ninth, which is a week from Friday, correct?
Correct.
We are having caring for the Cashens Bean Supper here at the town hall, so.
Four to seven.
Yes.
Yes, and raffles, raffles on these beautiful sheep skins.
Did you decide on pricing?
The donator decided that they'd be five dollars per try, five dollars a ticket.
Yeah, these are lambskins, sheep skins.
Sheep skins.
Is this one sheep?